Get some and put them out there for you if you'd like that.
But there's only one.
Okay.
Request police call roll.
Ms. Shinowitz.
Present.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Huth.
Here.
Mr. Otto.
Here.
Ms. Pat.
Here.
Mr. Whelan.
Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite.
Mayor called and said he would not be here tonight. Can we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving second, and that the minutes of the previous meeting be accepted. Any questions? Now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass. Any additions to the agenda? Can we have petitions in Communications? Those persons in the audience who would like to speak before the council for a period of no more than five minutes, you want to pick a card up from the rear and bring it up? The first person on the agenda would be John Lee Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I came here to express concern and petition the council to request an investigation of an incident that occurred last Friday at the Champaign County Fairgrounds in which youth, I'm told from the Abana and the Champaign community, got into a melee which resulted in the county fair being closed down. Now, I'm here because of that melee, but I'm also here because of the implications which I believe that that social disorder represents to the peace and tranquility of Abana as well as the peace and tranquility of Champaign. This was an incident involving fifty or more youth from both communities of all ages, which clearly, in my opinion, had to be organized. It was not a spontaneous situation that occurred. I believe that young people came to the fairgrounds with the intent of fighting each other, and I think that that represents a danger not only to the community of Abana and the community of Champaign, but it represents a danger to our public schools and to the overall tranquility that we need to enjoy in both of our communities. What I'm concerned with is that there is no appearance that we don't seem to care and that we have turned our heads or that we have forgotten that this incident did occur and that we do not understand the threat that it represents to all of the people of Abana. And therefore, I'm asking this body to request that a hearing be held by your Human Relations Commission. I'll be making the same request to the Champaign City Council tomorrow night to see if we can't determine what is the underlying cause of the situation which resulted in what happened at the fairgrounds. Now, I'm not asking for any violation of any youth's civil rights by announcing their names, but hopefully, we can be told by the Abana School District as well as the Champaign School District as to what they have seen last year and at the end of the closing of the schools this year regarding youth confrontations. We can get some report from the Abana Police and from the Sheriff of Champaign County as to what they know of the event, and that we can assess the conditions of our communities that may be contributing to the conditions which resulted in this year to give us some understanding as to what kinds of policies that could come from our school district, come from our park district, and come from this body that would help mitigate against the situation that occurred there. I would end by saying that I think it represents a tremendous threat to the welfare and security of our community and a threat that should not go unnoticed by all levels of our government. And I would hope that you will agree with me and that you would request that your Human Relations Commission would begin immediately to hold such hearings to determine what happened there at the Champaign Fairgrounds Friday of last week.
Ms. Wyman.
I'm wondering, because the Urbana Human Relations Commission meets for its regular meetings once a month, if you think it might be appropriate or also appropriate to ask that at our next committee meeting, which would be next Monday for City Council, that we ask the police to give a report or preliminary report on what's happened, their discussions with Urbana school officials, with the county sheriff's office, and their own internal investigation as far as reports of any police officers that went out to the county fairgrounds to start to get an idea, at least so this doesn't just wait until the next time the Human Relations Commission meets.
I think that would be appropriate, but I think if you would ask for a special hearing by the Human Relations Commission that would not follow their regular calendar. I think that all, everyone in Abana is aware of the importance and the danger of that event, but the moment that this government can begin to gather information and begin to have people to report to it, the moment that we can begin to say to parents and to young people alike that we take this matter serious and that we will not sit back in silence and allow our community to be destroyed and allow other kids to be destroyed by each other or to allow our hallways and our schools and our playgrounds and our public transportation systems to be at risk simply because young people don't believe that we're paying any attention to what they're doing.
Just one follow-up. I think I overheard, or I think you said earlier that you were planning on speaking with the Champaign City Council tomorrow regarding the same issue. Would it make sense to have a joint, either a joint meeting with, between the, suggest between the Human Relations Commissions or the city councils and the commissions?
I think it would, but I would leave that to you guys to decide how you would want to proceed. If the Abana Human Relations Commission and the Champaign Human Relations Commission would want to hold a joint hearing, that's fine. My concern is that urgently, we need to begin to, let me talk about this and to allow the community to know that we're talking about it. I think the greatest danger is silence, and people who perpetrate these kinds of incidents are hiding behind silence and hiding behind the refusal of the public to declare itself. And I think we need to say to those people, even though they may be middle school, high school, or even less, they and their parents, that we do take this serious, we will not be quiet about it, and we will do everything that we can and turn over every stone that we must to get to the bottom of it.
Thank you.
Ms. Shinowitz.
Yeah, I would support a joint commission. In fact, I wonder sometimes why the cities don't have more joint hearings, say, between Human Relations Commissions since we all are one community. The question I have for you, John Lee, is are you familiar with whether or not the school district is taking this up? Have you spoken to the school district?
No, I have not.
Okay. Do you intend to speak to the school district?
That all depends upon my time. You know, I do a radio program every Friday, and several months ago, a parent called in as the Abana schools were turning out, urging parents who may be listening to me to come to the Abana Middle School to serve as people out there to provide some support because of violence that was occurring there at the high school. I don't know if the kids that were involved in the violence were from Champaign or wherever, but there was street fighting going on there. My problem is that 116 has never said this to anyone. They have never alerted anyone that they may be having serious problems in behavioral fights, intimidations, or what neighborhoods that these young people may be coming from, what may be the influence. I've heard, and I say this cautiously, that people are saying that it could be kids from Chicago or whatever, but I don't believe that a kid coming in from out of town could cause hundreds of kids to be fighting. You know, I mean, you know, possibly encouraging a few kids, but not literally hundreds of kids. So, it's again a question of trying to put the best foot forward, and I think that that could be the case of 116. And what I'm simply saying, that that is a danger that all of us face when we're putting the best foot forward, and many young people believe that because this is not being discussed, no one is really paying any attention to what they're doing.
Yeah, it's not so much thinking that this is an issue for the school district and not the city because it's an issue for both. And I work with teenage girls, and they very much knew what was going on in the high school, and they were the ones who told me what was going on and detailed it, and there was both violence and, I believe, at least from their accounts, you know, kind of infringement of civil rights going on. And so, I think it's a very serious issue that we do need to address.
Mr. Dossel. I was just wondering if you could enlighten us a little bit more. Are you suggesting, well, there's two things that occurred to me from your thing. One is, since you're suggesting the school districts be involved, that maybe there's a crosstown rivalry component to it, or with the Human Relations Commission being involved, that there's a racial component to it. Can you provide any enlightenment on the basis of what you've heard or observed on what might be stimulating the violence?
Well, I was told that there was a question of territorial issues.
Okay.
Kids from Champaign fighting kids from Abana.
Okay.
I don't know, that's why I'm here.
Sure.
If I knew exactly what was the causes of this, then I would be telling you that and be telling your chief and everyone possible.
Sure.
I'm suggesting the Human Relations Commission because I believe that they may have more independent time to conduct this hearing than this council may have because of all the other business before you. But that's a question of scheduling that you have to consider versus that.
Sure.
I'm not suggesting the HRC because of race.
Okay.
I'm suggesting the HRC because their overall responsibility is to look at the social welfare of the people of the community, including issues of race and gender.
Sure.
And I think there could be some underlying social factors that we need to understand, identify and understand, and to bring people into our community to help us mitigate against it.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention. It is something we want to look into.
Any other questions? I have one question. You know, quite often, we talk about the silent majority, adults who see these young people acting up, and I guess someone will feel helpless. What kind of suggestions do you have for that?
Call the police. That's what the police is there for, they're eager to help. When you see children doing things in your neighborhood that's inappropriate, call the police. I would encourage everyone who's not a part of a neighborhood watch to join a neighborhood watch, but I would also encourage people to do things with their children, whether it's their own children or children in the area. Possibly some of the underlying causes of this is that children don't believe that they're supported, there's not enough organized activities for their involvement, therefore, they're more susceptible to other forces that may have caused what we saw at the fairground. This is a, as they say, this is a village issue, and all of us must be actively involved in it, which is why I'm suggesting the park district, the school district, and this government, and ultimately, if we held hearings that would involve church leaders, civic people, concerned people, all to come in and to share their concerns. If our children are going to the devil in a handbasket, then we're all responsible for it, not just someone on the block. And if we're going to stop that, we all got to understand what, why it is, what it is, and get engaged in it. And I'm just trying to offer this as a first step. I'm just trying to say, I think, what other people would want to say and may not would have the courage to come here and ask you to begin this process, but I think that everyone, everyone in Abana and everyone in the Champaign who have any relation at all to this incident is as much concerned about it as I am.
No other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Henry Spees.
I know many of you, my basic business is that of a residential construction consultant, and I would like to urge the Urbana City Council to add one sentence to the building code to protect the investment of their residents. That sentence being, "All components shall be installed according to the manufacturer's instructions." Now, this is nothing drastic, we're not going to fight, nitpick the whole thing, but the following statement appears in most of these things. Failure to follow these installation instructions avoids the manufacturer's warranty. All right, I can go out into Savannah Green, and I will tell you that there is not a house out there that the siding and windows are installed according to the manufacturer's instructions. They'll probably do pretty well until the builder's warranty is over, but that's about it. When we made that suggestion to the foreman out there, we were none too politely invited to take our opinions elsewhere as we were talking to a prospective buyer. I cannot blame the building department because they can only enforce what the code says. And what we really need to do is to put in that one sentence that says it will be installed according to the manufacturer's instructions. And this does not happen just in a lower-cost area such as Savannah Green. Within the past year, I've had work up in Barringer Commons. I would imagine, I have no idea exactly, but I would imagine the house was in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. It cost the buyer of the house $72,000 to get it fixed so that it didn't leak when she moved in. She got a court judgment against the builder for it, but if it had been built according to the manufacturer's instructions of the products that were installed, it would not have happened. Why are we allowing people to be taken advantage this way? Thank you. Yes.
It makes a lot of sense to me. The question I have is, how would the city of Urbana go about enforcing something like that?
Well, nearly all of the manufacturer's installation instructions are available on the Internet. I have one here on the installation of vinyl siding. I would estimate that at the most, 10% of the vinyl siding in this town is installed properly according to this. It's a perfectly good product, I have some in my house, but most of it is not being installed properly, and this is going to arise to haunt us with time. And every manufacturer of these things has posted this on the Internet. That's why I got this, and I'll be happy to give a copy to anybody who's interested.
So, that would mean that a new house being built would not get kind of a permit for occupancy until the city had determined that the fixtures had been installed via the manufacturer's investigation?
There need to be various components of the house, not necessarily the fixtures. Let me read a couple of paragraphs here. It might illustrate where my concerns are. Vinyl siding has always been designed as an exterior cladding, not a weather-resistant barrier. Vinyl siding is designed to allow the material underneath it to breathe, therefore, it is not a watertight covering. Because of its design and application, it provides a supplemental rain screen that enhances the weather-resistant barrier system by reducing the amount of water that reaches the underlying weather-resistant barrier. Is what is a weather-resistant barrier? Is a system that includes water-shedding materials and water-diversion materials. Weather-resistant barriers commonly consist of a combination of exterior cladding, flashed wall openings and penetrations, weather-resistant barrier material, and sheathing. Weather-resistant barriers will shed the water initially, control moisture flow by capillary and diffusion action, and minimize the absorption into the wall structure. To achieve the designed performance, vinyl siding must be installed over a weather-resistant barrier system that includes a continuous weather-resistant material and properly integrated flashings around all penetrations and where vinyl siding interfaces with other materials. After a good heavy rainstorm, I wish you would man my phone. Because the amount of phone calls I get from leakage, this has become nationally such a serious problem. ASTM, the old American Standard for Testing Materials, has issued a new standard for flashing windows and doors. It's a very good one. I do not expect this council to adopt that, but I would at least like them to adopt the idea that this stuff ought to be put on the way the manufacturer said, not the way some cheapskate can put it up.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Spees. Scott Dosia.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Dossett, and I live at 501 East High Street, just about a block or two over there. And then, speaking in terms of your new business, agenda item H2, the ordinance 0408091 about amending the zoning map for 505 South Urbana Avenue. And I stand opposed to the amendment to rezone that lot. We've been having a lot of sort of decrepit rental housing converted into shabbily constructed multiple residential sort of housing units in my neighborhood in the past two or three years, and I think that what this does is essentially take an immediately blighted zone that the city of Urbana should address in terms of upkeep, maintenance, and nuisance ordinances, and turn it into sort of a creeping blight that affects our neighborhoods as a whole. The zoning map for the city of Urbana currently does in fact show that this property abuts a one high-zone residential, it's an R5, R6 zoning, and a portion of a medical institutional campus zone. But as I live in the neighborhood and as I walk around the neighborhood and I see the beautiful gardens of the people who live right next door to this lot that will be upzoned, the poor condition of the property, which is at 503 or the immediate adjacent, it's like an eight-stack, two floors, probably four apartments on each floor, I get real concerned about the general quality of my neighborhood, and so I would like to request that the council not accept this amendment to the current zoning map. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Dossett. Mr. Christopher Stor.
Good evening. My name's Christopher Stor, and like Scott Dossett before me, I live a few blocks from the 505 South Urbana, and I rise and ask, come before you to ask that the council consider not granting the request to change the zoning from R3 to R4. The, trying to convert what might be misperceived as a rundown house and to shoehorn a four-apartment complex into a small lot might seem to be a solution for a blight, but our house was considered the worst house in the block. Not, no question, that was as bad as it was. We purchased the house, made repairs and improvements, and it's, I believe, a real asset to the neighborhood. I don't necessarily think that because a house looks, has cosmetic problems that it rushed to be taken to consider the house a blight or somehow a bad thing for the neighborhood when, especially in considering that a long-term occurrence, apartment that is clearly not very aesthetically part of the neighborhood might be put in. That's just, I don't see that as a particularly useful exchange.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. George Carlyle.
I'm George Carlyle, I'm 406 East Green, in a building, apartment building just over here in Green Street that was originally a rather small lot, and the part there is a tightness of parking spaces in the back, access is by an alley. I'm very much concerned about rezoning the area 505 South Urbana Street because it looks like, as I've walked around the back here and seeing the parking situation of the building at 503, it has four covered parking spaces, very cramped for its four apartments, and then there's just a narrow gravel driveway. It would look like that if they made an apartment building at 505, they'd probably have to share the same driveway with both buildings, there's so little space. There simply isn't room. Then there's the parking problem on the street. The street doesn't have curbs, there really isn't room, and it's like the rest of the neighborhood, some areas, Elm Street, they in recent years, they've taken down some old houses, built apartments, and some have objected to the setback situation, the parking congestion and so forth. Yeah, it just would be best not to zone this area for anything more than a two-family house at most. I don't believe that lot is really large enough for anything but a single-family house, but the house that is on there is in very deplorable condition. It either needs to be completely rehabilitated or else demolished, and a new single-family house rebuild in the space. And also, I see on the agenda about the Sunny Crash Shopping area. Now, Mrs. Zagorsky wrote an editorial in Sunny's Gazette that really hit the nail on the head that, yeah, she's lamenting the loss of Jerry's IGA stores, I am, and a number of other people here, and ones myself included, against the new Walmart going in southeast that, I wonder why the city council couldn't have provided some incentives to keep the Jerry's IGA in business southeast in the Sunny Crash area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlyle. Ms. Alice Engelbretzen.
Hi, I'm Alice Engelbretzen. I live at 501 East California, which is about a block and a half from the 505 South Urbana. I'm also an officer in the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, and I sent you all an email, but I'll just reiterate pretty much what I said, which is that it's a very small lot for a fourplex, and upzoning that to a fourplex is really counter to where HUNA, the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, would like to go with our neighborhood. We really want to keep it as a single-family neighborhood as much as possible. And that particular neighborhood, that particular block and several others are blighted. Parking on the street is already a problem, and the way the plan is now, the site plan, is parking would only be on the street side, which is, A, very unsightly and something we don't want. And the apartment building next door is also something I think we'd like to discourage. I know that's not on the agenda for tonight, but it's quite a blight on that particular street. So, as a neighbor and an officer in HUNA, I'd encourage you to not upzone that to R4 and keep it a single-family home, hopefully for affordable housing. We'd like to see that happen there, too. So, I hope you turn down this request of some. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Abe Omoosaki.
Hi. Actually, I came in here to talk about something else, but obviously, maybe I can mix two things together here. I've listened to three speakers now talk about... the zoning of somebody who wants probably to convert or build a small apartment building. And I used to live in the neighborhood where people are concerned about. And it's interesting that they have been trying for years now to say that that neighborhood is going to be single-family. It's not going to happen. It's too close to the University of Illinois. And I'll tell you, one thing that's going to happen is this. It's very close to the University of Illinois. And when the cost gets too much for somebody to renovate his house, what he will do is rent to students. And students now, when I got in the business, students were used to wanting to pay maybe $150, $170 per person. Today, students are willing to pay $550 to $650 per person. Okay? So when you have a house like that, it's, it's an old house, it's going to cost a lot of money to renovate, they'll just leave it that way. And what they'll do is rent it to students, you know? When I lived in that neighborhood, of course, I was probably, everybody in that neighborhood thought alike. I was one of the few people who did not think like that. And incidentally, of course, I'm one week late, but I would let you know this. When you start talking about whether you should have out at large, you know, to bring other people in and so on and so forth, my concern is this. You have people who represent basically this section. You know, most of the people of the council, at least four of you I know, represent people from that neighborhood. And obviously, you're going to try to do what they do. But that neighborhood is not a banner. That neighborhood is just the vocal minority, you know? You're made up mostly of professors who make their living from the university but don't want to live close to students. You know, it's a self-defeating thing. You have, anytime there's a vote on anything like this, you know, I mean, I can always count that there are four people that are going to vote the same way. I think that, I'm not, you know, I'm not interested in politics, but I think that in due course, you know, in the interest of a banner, you have to find a way to bring people who have experience in other fields apart from just activists all the council. You might be able to learn a thing or two. You don't have to do what they say, but they might open your eyes to other things. You know, a banner needs money. You guys, the way things are going, we're teaching on the brink of bankruptcy in a sense, you know? I have, you know, there's an apartment building which I own on Iowa Street. You know, it makes maybe $9,000 a month. There's a house, an old house, right next to it, which is zoned R7. Makes about $5,000 a month. It makes more money. That house makes more money than the apartment building. But the house, it's an old house. You cannot make it, Lincoln is now the gateway to the University of Illinois campus. There is no way I'm going to spend $150,000 or $200,000 to make that place look great for people coming in. When I make decisions, I make them based on money. And I'm sure that all of you sitting here, when you make decisions in your lives, it's based on money. The good thing is, that's one thing we all can agree on in America. What I'm saying is, they downzoned that, that lot. And of course, I can never build an apartment building on it. If I built an apartment building on it, the, the taxes on that apartment building would probably be about $18,000. Right now, I pay about $4,000 or $5,000 on that piece of property. The property next to it, I pay $16,000 or $17,000 a year on that property. You know, so in terms, we've got to think about income and quit trying to cater to the intellectuals and university professors who are actually a minority in a banner. They're just a vocal minority. They're smarter than everybody else, you know? And that's the problem. You guys have to ignore them, you know, and make decisions for a banner. You know, money is important. Somebody has got to hear it. Walmart is coming, everybody shows up and says, no. What's the problem? You know, I live out, where they're going to put Walmart, I live closer to it than most of the people complaining, you know? What are you going to do for Jerry's IGA? You know, are they going to compete with Walmart? No. How much is Walmart going to bring to a banner? That is what you should think about. Think about money. I know you don't like to say that decisions shouldn't be based on money, you know, but I know, you know, anytime somebody says it's not about money, it is about money, you know? So don't let's pretend, let's do the right thing. A banner needs money, you know? Those old houses that are blocked, you know, in a banner with all the zoning and things like that, they're going to remain like that for another 20 or 30 years until, and then they'll be rented to, these same professors that are complaining, when they move, they probably pay them better to rent to, to students. You know, they can make $2,200 bucks a month. Don't like it. You know, but right now, they complain, they don't want students living near them. Meanwhile, without students, they won't have an income. You know, so we've got to do something. Either you get people to advise you who are in business or something. All the people that I know, where I live, where I've moved to, think like me. When I lived on campus, everybody thought the way you guys think, you know? And I think it's inconsistent with making money if you continue to think like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Osoagi?
No, there's no question. They never, they just ignore me.
Mr. R.M. Hill. Is there Mr. R.M. Hill?
Yes. Good amount of depth and can't hear too well. My name is Richard Hill. I'm from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And we build condos. And we are looking at property on Lincoln to try to build condos. The reason we picked that area, we looked at several large colleges and we prefer the larger colleges. The more students you have, the more opportunities you have to sell a condo. So with that in mind, we, we put Illinois High on the list. And we have looked at, at Auburn, Georgia, Alabama. We're building condos in Ole Miss, LSU, Texas A&amp;M. We've looked at Oklahoma, Oklahoma State. And this piece of property on Lincoln came to our attention. And why do we like that property? It's a billboard coming in. People pass it and we build a nice project. We take pride in our work. It's close to the campus where students could ride a bicycle or could, it has a bus stop there. So that's the reason we picked that area. So we are requesting that we get permission to build condos on the property on Lincoln.
Ms. Warren.
I spoke with you before the city council meeting and I just want to make sure that, that I understand correctly that some of the units will be accessible to people with disabilities? That there'll be a zero-step entrance for, so that people who are in wheelchairs or have other mobility impairments will, will be able to enter and, and can, can adapt or the condo can be adapted for accessibility?
Yes, they will meet all the requirements for a handicap.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one. Should these two ordinances pass? I see staff has made some recommendations. Are you familiar with those recommendations?
The, the recommendations that...
That staff recommended?
Right, yes, I'm familiar with that.
You're familiar with those, huh? And you're willing to go along with those recommendations?
Yes, sir.
No, I don't have any other questions. Have you got a question?
No, not at this point.
Ms. Warren.
I'm sorry, one more. Under the, I think, requirements or under the allowances for the planned unit developments, they allow up to 10% of the property to be available for commercial building. Are you planning on doing any commercial construction in the, around the area?
No.
Okay.
I think we detract from the, from the buildings themselves. I don't think anyone would want to live behind a service station particularly or behind a fast food residence. I think that we're trying to build a, a community. We've looked around, there are people building condos in Savoy. We've looked in Champaign, we've seen they're building condos there. We have seen a big market at this, at the universities we have visited. And I think it's coming because of low interest rates, people, alumni wanting to invest in the, in the area and coming back. So I think this project will probably bring other projects under to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Matt Deffern.
Good evening. My name is Matt Deering. I'm an attorney, excuse me, a local attorney.
Oh, sorry about the pronunciations.
No, that's okay, I understand. My writing's not so good. In any event, I'm an attorney, local attorney here on behalf of Hills for College, the petitioner in the rezoning matter that Dr. Hill just spoke of. He kind of got us on a board there for a minute. I was, I'm, I only have a brief comment. And I was going to introduce Dr. Hill, Mr. Burns of Burns Clancy, who I'm sure you all are very familiar with, the engineer on this project. And then identify that Mr. David Owen, who is the property owner of, the current property owner where this project is proposed, who's also in the audience to answer some questions regarding this proposal, proposed project. The brief comments I would have are simply, we hope that you all will recognize that, I'm sure you all will recognize, and we hope you will give due consideration to the fact that this property has sat vacant for eight years. We recognize that the City of Urbana had thought that this may develop as commercial property. The fact of the matter is, in the eight years since that plan came on board, it has not done so. Hills for College and Dr. Hill and the other principals of the company have a track record of getting projects done, good quality projects. They have, they have accomplished projects very similar, if not identical, to the project that they're proposing for North Urbana, North Lincoln Avenue in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, College Station, Texas, as well as Oxford, Mississippi. These are high-quality projects. We think everyone would be happy to have these in their neighborhood. But more importantly, and this is the main point I was wanting to make and hope you will give some consideration to, is at my, at my firm, we did a estimate of the tax impact that this project would have. I believe you all have a copy of this in your, in your packet, but if not, I do have extras. We feel this is a very important consideration that your constituents would like to hear. Based on a estimated fair market value of the post-completion project, estimated value of $12 million. We estimate an assessed value of $4 million, which would lead to just shy of $341,000 in real estate taxes per year for the City of, from this property. Very importantly, from that number, we would point out that the school district for the City of Urbana stands to, stands to take just shy of $184,000 into the coffers. We think that's a obviously very significant number and something we hope you'll consider when contemplating the request for rezoning and special use later on this evening. Essentially, what you have here is a, is a very high-quality developer that's ready to develop a project that stands to have a significant positive impact on the tax base for the City of Urbana. And on behalf of Hills for College, I would simply request that you follow your planning commission suggestion and pass the request later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Tom Burns.
Good evening, folks. Always glad to see you. It's a pleasure to speak with you, perhaps briefly, regarding and support of the Hills for College program, in support of the recommendation from the planning commission. Planning commission recommended the rezoning at 5:02 and the special use 7:00. Hopefully, that will weigh heavily on your evaluation from the city council point of view. I might also note that as the planning commission, there was no negative comments on the project from any resident of the area or any comment from any person at all. The Lincoln Avenue project site is certainly what many of us have called the gateway to the University of Illinois, as since identified as such in the prior decade by the University of Illinois staff in trying to focus where those gateways to the community exist. This particular project is a, is a positive excitement one. I think would have positive support for the council and for the community. These condominiums is a new concept for student ownership living versus an apartment situation. Perhaps some of the concerns that have been addressed by other folks that relate to rental properties, this is quite exactly the antithesis of that in that it's intended to be owned ultimately by the students and/or their families for their living opportunities. One of the things I want to bring to your attention is the, the opportunity we've had to work with the Melrose project sometime back, back in the, I think originally created in 1995 and for which, for the most part, I'm very pleased with it. Very proud to have been associated with that project, with the owners and the developers. I think they've done a good job and have provided a positive opportunity for students and residents of Urbana. As you'll recall, perhaps, in 1982, the comprehensive plan for the City of Urbana indicated that the property, for the Melrose property and including the one that exists now for the, Mr., Dr. Hill's project, was identified in the comprehensive plan as industrial. In fact, I think the comprehensive plan now identifies it as industrial. I don't think it ever intended to be that way in a recent time. It's a, it's an overlooked concept of the comprehensive plan that still is in effect, hasn't been modified. Staff no doubt can, as a part of this whole process, look at that as well. Because I don't think it's intended to be industrial. Hasn't been for a long time in the past. I don't think it's intended to be developed industrially now. We need to address that comprehensive plan element. That becomes a little awkward when you want to compare the proposal of a rezoning and how is, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Well, obviously, I don't think it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It, it needs to be consistent with the continuation of the Melrose property concept shape. I was part of that team that made that presentation on a synergistic sort of an approach, how we're going to work with a little bit of commercial with the residential opportunities with Melrose. I, I thought it was a good idea. It was one that I supported, one that I advocated. Trouble is, it didn't work very well. Folks couldn't build it well from a commercial situation. It was awkward and in eight years, they've not been able to find an appropriate purchaser, developer to do a commercial development of that property. Obviously, Mr. Owen, who's available here, will speak to that later on. But that was a concern that we tried to do that. We hoped that there would be some beneficial, joint benefit from both the commercial and the residential in that area. Turns out, it's a little farther away from the intersection of the interstate. It's far enough, it didn't work very well. It just doesn't work well to do an interchange on the interstate access from folks that's not done at the corner. One of the properties at the corner, the so-called in our community, the Marathon property, has not been developed in a similar fashion. In fact, I've had, I don't know how many phone calls I've made with the representatives of the Marathon and not get a good response from them at all at what they want to develop and what price they'd want to set on it, et cetera. Perhaps it must have been the way I asked the question. No, perhaps I didn't get a, a good response from them. But nonetheless, the continuation and the finalization, as you can see from the colored photographs... photographs that we submitted to you, that the logical definition dividing line, so to speak, between the residential is probably the Melrose property, and north of Melrose would be those areas that contrasted with the comp plan, but with zoning ordinance, that zoning and commercial north of Melrose probably makes some sense then, and probably still does now, and I continue to have hopes that there will be a commercial element in that vicinity, some of which will be benefiting the properties from the, the students that would live in this particular area. We went through and thought through, and we would encourage you to look through the staff memo as it relates to whether or not this particular proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I alluded some of that issue as well, and I think if you're looking on an objective basis, look at the LaSalle criteria as outlined in all of the issues that relate to rezoning and to use an objective view on whether or not this project as proposed is consistent or perhaps alternatively by other folks, not consistent. I don't believe that's the case. I think there's a, a mixed blessing of this project as it relates to the LaSalle criteria, and in some respects, it looks forward to an updating of the Urbana comprehensive plan. Perhaps the best indication of this whole approach is one that I'm pleased with. I've just gotten to know Dr. Hill and his team at Mitch Richardson. They do a good job. They're conscientious, they're thoughtful, they're creative, they're trying to do the right thing for Urbana. They're, they're not trying to put in some sort of land use that would not be consistent with Urbana and our community and with this neighborhood. I think it's one that would be consistently and supportable between the Melrose and the neighborhood, that would be supportable of that. As Dr. Hill had suggested earlier, this as a billboard, as the gateway to the university, will be an important opportunity for continuation so that the, that block from Melrose and south is not industrial, but in fact, a residential one in that neighborhood that will be supportable by this community and this part of the city of Urbana. And once again, I would recommend your support for the planning commission's recommendation for a five to two favorable vote for the rezoning and seven to zero positive vote for the special use permit, and would answer any questions you have and ask for your support.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? One question.
Yes, sir.
When you look at the aerial photographs of the proposed project, the date that you based it on was 2002.
I think that's the case, it's probably on the board right here.
2002, but the, the project itself, uh, was fitted in the plan 2004. Now, since you've been tied up with, you know, Melrose for a long period of time, in '95, '96, whatever, and, uh, can you tell us approximately, if you know, how many commercial offers have been made from that, that period of time since '96 or so?
I'm just not privy to that. That's not something that I deal with, is a, a real estate transaction as to commercial development. Mr. Owen could speak directly to the number of opportunities he's had. The statement he made in the, in the planning commission was that he had looked at 20 to 30 different concept plans, but only actually had offers from six to eight people had specific plans or concepts that they submitted. For various reasons, Mr. Owen can address that more effectively, that it didn't work out. It just didn't happen, both either the opportunity or the location and how the size of the property. From a commercial site, nine acres is not a very big site. It's, it's clearly not an ancillary facility similar to, to marketplace. It's a significantly different, it's more of a neighborhood opportunity, only nine acres. I don't mean to be negative, that's a big piece of ground in some respects, but nonetheless, as a commercial site, that's really pretty small.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burns.
Thank you.
The next gentleman has been highly recommended by Mr. Burns. The owner of the property, Mr. Owen. Mr. Owen?
Good evening, my name's David Owen, and I represent MBO Corp., who is the owner of the land on Lincoln that we're talking about, so.
Talk a little more, Mike.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Okay. I would like to say a few words in recommendation of Dr. Hill, and then I will say a few words about the letter that was attached, I think, to your memorandum that came out, which I just saw a couple of hours ago, actually, but I'll be glad to respond to any questions after that on specific issues. As some of you know, it was eight years ago we sat in this hall and did the initial zoning of the MBO tract. It's been eight years. We have tried both internally to develop this site as a commercial retail site. We've been unsuccessful doing it internally. We have talked to a number of retail, commercial developers, none of which were able to put together a reasonable prospect, a project that had a reasonable prospect for success. So after eight years, or after seven years, I guess, about a year ago, Dr. Hill approached us. Dr. Hill is someone who MBO is very familiar with. MBO owns properties around the country, including a number of them at university centers. Dr. Hill approached us on our property, which is a very similar-sized project in College Station, Texas. Dr. Hill had an idea or presented us with a proposal to do a very upscale student condominium. We went to contract. Dr. Hill honored every aspect, every element of that contract within the timeframes that, that were set and, and we had agreed to. Dr. Hill honored every commitment he made to the city. Today, there's, there sits one of the nicest projects in College Station, Texas, is the project that Dr. Hill developed on the 12 acres of MBO property there. So Dr. Hill is a very well-known commodity to us, and a year ago, he approached us about possibly developing on the site here in Urbana. We met with Dr. Hill here at that time, introduced the project, introduced some of the technical people so that he could become familiar with the project and with the area. Since that time, I personally met with Dr. Hill and his people here. My associates have met with him at additional times, and he's been here many times beyond that, getting very familiar with the area, the project. So he's very confident in May, when he approached us, that he was prepared to go to final contract. We began the negotiations of final contract. And this is where I'll speak a little bit to the letter that I read a few hours ago. As we were entering into the final negotiations, someone called my associate, Ron Buckley. Just for your information, MBO is an acronym also. It stands for three gentlemen's last name. B is for Buckley, and O is for Owen, so he's a colleague, an associate in MBO. The gentleman identified himself as Mr. Garrison from Springfield, Illinois, and he is the gentleman that I think wrote the letter that you have in front of you. He identified himself as a broker representing a group that might be interested in developing the property on Lincoln that we had, and asked if we had gone to contract with it. And we said we were in the process of finalizing a contract, but had not executed that contract at that time. Mr. Garrison said he would submit a, a competing offer. A few days later, he actually did submit a competing offer, as he said he would. The competing offer was significantly deficient in comparison to Dr. Hill's contract in almost every aspect. We asked Mr. Garrison what his intentions were, and he notified Mr. Buckley that he was trying to put together a retail and commercial development on the site, and he needed a number of months to organize and see if he could get any tenants, and if he was successful in that, he could organize. The financing would take a little period of time, and then some more time beyond that to actually close. That was his initial offer. That would put it well into 2005, which is, again, significantly different than what we had in Dr. Hill's offer at that point. Mr. Garrison then provided an additional offer which met the minimum criteria that Mr. Buckley outlined for him, but still was in almost every way deficient in comparison to Dr. Hill's offer. What's important for you to understand is what MBO and what information MBO had in front of it to make its decisions. All of the information we know about Mr. Garrison, I have told you already, were in a series of phone conversations, of which he identified himself as a broker, that may or may not have engaged as a principal. None of his other principles were ever identified. None of his contacts with Urbana were ever identified. I saw in the letter this evening that there was adjoining property interest involved. MBO found out about that in that letter. So, we have never seen a concept plan, we have never seen a site plan, we have no idea what Mr. Garrison is preparing to develop. It may be a fine development, it may be, and again, I don't know Mr. Garrison from anybody. I really don't. But we have to make decisions on what we know. That's all we can make decisions on. And based upon the information we had available a month ago, we made a decision on what was clearly a better contract. That condition exists a week ago, it exists yesterday, it exists today. I don't know what it will be tomorrow, but there are no contracts with Mr. Garrison that MBO found acceptable or indicated in any way acceptable. There are no letters, binding letters of intent. There are no interests that Mr. Garrison has in our property. And I'm, I'm a little, I think all of us at MBO are a little concerned, but a great many things have happened relative to our property that we're unaware of, so, but that's, you know, we're big boys, we'll, we'll deal with it. So, we have, after eight years, a very viable contract from a person who we have absolute or very high degrees of certainty will get done. And a year from now, you'll have one of the finest projects you have anywhere in Urbana, sitting on that acre. That's all we have. So, again, after eight years, you know, I, I honestly and truly hope that you accept Dr. Hill's proposal and let him develop this very fine project for Urbana.
Any questions?
I just opened it up for questions, I guess.
Questions? I might have a couple. You had no contact with this Garrison group?
Well, my associate, Ron Buckley, has talked on the phone with him a number of times. We have never met with him here, we've never met with him in Springfield, we've never met with him in Florida, but, so, you know, again, we, we know nothing about them other than a few phone calls.
No letters of intent?
No letters of intent were ever signed by MBO.
So you really don't know who they are?
Personally, I have no idea who they are.
No?
And again, they may be very legitimate people, I'm not saying that, it just, we, we have no knowledge of it. Whereas, we sit in Florida, we only know what we know. And no effort was made, and that's the other thing, I just, it's just very confusing for me. I've been in this business a long time, and one of the things that you do is, is to make a contract, it's in the, in the initial part of a contract negotiation is to establish your bona fides. Are you capable of doing what you're going to say? No effort was made in this. Again, they may be the most competent, capable people in, in the country, but no effort, we have no knowledge of that. So, I, you know, but we know Dr. Hill absolutely has the capability of doing what he says. I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, I'm...
And, well, you know, no one has seen any site plans?
I have not seen a site plan, I have not seen a concept plan, I have not seen anything, nor has anyone in MBO.
And, uh, there may or may not have been a marketability study?
I have not seen any, I have not heard any references to any, we don't know, you know, we don't know the familiarity that Mr. Garrison would have of this area. I, I don't know. He may be intimately familiar with it, but we have no knowledge of that.
Oh, you say "we," and...
We, MBO.
No, I know, I know, but you being, you being the owner, you say that this is a better plan by far than the other one from Garrison, because you don't even know where they're coming from or what they have?
I have no idea what their plan is, other than it was referenced as a commercial retail plan.
Any other questions? Mr. Chandler?
I'll ask a few questions now and then I'll wait for staff report and give you follow-up questions. Both in the documentation and here in testimony, it was said that, you know, you said, you've talked to many people and tried to do many things with folks who wanted to do various things and they just did not work. Could you, and then it was stated tonight that there may be six or seven serious attempts at commercial development on this property in the last eight years and, you know, 20 to 30 less serious inquiries. Could you explain why some of those things, without maybe going into the details of the offers, why those, say, six or seven, why they did not work? There's some pieces that are missing in the picture for me here.
Well, again, it's kind of hard to remember back over eight years exactly what all the, all the problems were. No one could get comfortable with the marketability of the out parcels. It was a general problem. You know, it wasn't, no one, you know, the frustrating part for all of us is, it makes sense to me eight years ago that, that there is potential here, but it's, the site characteristics were, were difficult for some, the accessway, there's no, there's no opposing road of consequence that you could line up your entryways with. The entryway had to go kind of in the middle to line up with the road across the street, which kind of truncates your site plan a little bit. You know, it, it was a variety, and each one was a little different, and, you know, it's, you know, and I wish I had clear answers for you, I don't, you know, because each one was a little different, and it's frustrating for me, too, so...
In each case, was it the developer who withdrew the request or withdrew, or were there instances where you did not like the type of development presented and therefore refused the development based on the type of development?
No, I don't, I think we gave serious consideration to anybody. I don't recall a time where it was specifically MBO that, that simply didn't want whatever they were considering doing. We've, again, we, we have our own in-house architects that have run master plan after master plan in almost every configuration you could imagine, with almost every land use you could imagine back there. So, no, we weren't, we weren't, I mean, there are some that we would not have allowed, but that was not part of any particular true discussion we were having with anybody.
So of the, of the significant discussions, there was never a time when you said, "This is not a compatible commercial use too, next to Melrose Apartments, and therefore..."
Not in the actual ones that we were looking at, no. No. There were some that we would have said that, but in this case, we did not, that's not the case.
Would you be opposed to commercial development on this property?
Oh, not at all, but one thing you need to realize, MBO has no affiliation with, with Melrose Apartments anymore. Okay.
Okay, so, did MBO, just from reading the minutes, I made an affiliation since, I believe you said, it'd been eight years ago since you had talked about proposing Melrose Apartments, so you were involved in proposing Melrose Apartments?
Yes.
MBO, I mean?
Yes, yes. Again, it's, it's a little confusing. We were with a group that developed the Melrose Apartments. We are not with that group anymore. We were at the same time with MBO, which was a completely separate company.
Okay.
We're no longer affiliated with the Melrose Apartments at all.
So you're not involved in managing?
Not at all.
Or, in any way, okay.
No. We were originally, we are not now.
I guess I'll call my questions for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Christopher Alex.
Evening, I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Christopher Alex, and I live at 301 East George Huff Drive. I'm speaking again tonight to the issue of at-large representation. I know this is not on the agenda, so I'll be brief and not reiterate the arguments I made at the last meeting. First, I'd like to apologize on behalf of all concern for the lack of information that was available to council prior to last week's meeting. There was considerable confusion and dispute over what the proposal is, so I wanted to try to clarify that tonight. The proposal is actually straightforward. Illinois law authorizes a city our size to have seven wards with two aldermen each. It also gives us as voters the right to reduce this number to one per ward, plus up to seven members elected at large. In 1979, we exercised this option with no at-large members. The proposal now is to add two, which keeps the council ward-oriented, but offers benefits that have already been described. A hybrid council combining ward and at-large seats is a legal system that is specifically authorized by state law and used in cities across the state, including Aurora, Freeport, Joliet, McComb, Moline, Sterling, and Champaign. It is hard to imagine a better place for it than Urbana, whose demographics and asymmetric growth challenge the capabilities of the ward system. To make this change, the voters must approve the proposition, shall the city of Urbana restrict the number of aldermen to nine, with one alderman representing each ward, plus an additional two aldermen to be elected at large. The proposition can be brought to the ballot by council, or by a petition signed by 432 registered voters. With council split on the issue and unlikely to send it to the ballot, a group of citizens is circulating petitions, and it appears that the signatures are there to bring this to the ballot in November. Council expressed concerns about the timing of the issue. The timing is the result of two things. First, the recent redistricting refocused attention on the ward system and led to discussions, which in turn led to this proposal. Second is the election cycle. If the proposition is approved in November, a nine-member council will be elected in April. If the proposition were brought in April, the new seats would not be filled until the next election in 2009. There are still three months before the election, and if the voters support the proposal, I see no reason to wait four years to start realizing the benefits. It has been suggested that this proposal will open the city to legal action, yet recent and anticipated growth patterns seem likely to push the current ward map well outside legal guidelines for equity by 2012. Adding at-large seats should be seen as a good-faith effort to mitigate the seemingly intractable problem of drawing a more flexible ward map. It has also been suggested that a hybrid council would underrepresent students. I'm sure the students appreciate the sudden concern. For decades, Urbana has drawn its ward map to protect majority party seats and benefit permanent residents based on the cynical knowledge that students don't vote. Until Urbana creates a campus ward and pigs fly, this proposal would give mobilized students a place on the field in two council races, rather than on the sidelines as a minority in four wards. It has been suggested that at-large representation panders to rich white Republicans, which is not how I would characterize Todd Sathwaite, Phyllis Clark, and Geraldo Rosales. Carbondale has elected its six-member council entirely at large since 1966. As Tom Kasek of the News Gazette pointed out on Sunday, that council currently includes two African-Americans and a member of the Green Party. Carbondale has also elected students to its council, because at-large elections give them an undiluted vote. That which failed in Springfield works in Carbondale, because Carbondale is different from Springfield. So are we, implying that Urbana won't elect qualified minority candidates, insults the voters, and ignores the history of this progressive community. It has been suggested that this proposal is anti-democrat, anti-liberal, anti-woman, and/or anti-student. These arguments run contrary to the support the petition has been receiving from Democrats, liberals, women, and students. Much was made of the fact that at the last meeting, a dozen people showed up to speak against, and only half a dozen showed up to speak for, and that that somehow speaks to the merits of the proposal. I agree wholeheartedly. This proposal is not about counting noses in the council chamber. It's about telling the citizens who don't show up, because they don't feel that they have a voice, that there's a reason to come down to City Hall and be heard. The truth is, this proposal is not anti-anything. It's about flexibility, inclusion, and respect for minority positions. It's about exceeding the bare legal minimum of equity afforded by the ward system, and empowering groups beyond those that the courts tell us we have to. In the end, it's about diversity of ideas, for which I feel we can always make more room at the table. I continue to encourage the council and the voters of Urbana to support this effort. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Pat?
Thank you. Mr. Alex, since you're here, would you mind answering a question about an agenda item tonight?
To the extent that I can, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Because you're a member of the Plan Commission, having heard the discussion tonight, you were one of the members who voted in favor of the rezoning for the kind of proposal on North Lincoln Avenue.
That is correct.
Yes. Are you still in support of that?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Any persons in the audience who would like to address the council, pick up a card in the back, and we will allow you to speak for five minutes. Seeing none, any members of council? Ms. Wyman?
Just, I've gotten further comments, and I don't know if other council members have either, I guess they're more, just feels like incessant, comments about, on Sundays, there's parking, at least on our street, on the streets in my ward, there are several churches. I suppose there are churches in everyone's ward. But...
Churches in my ward, I mean?
No? Okay. Well, we've got a lot of, a couple churches on Main Street, and if Public Works, and I think there was someone from Public Works who was here, can address the issue, because there seems to be very little visibility when you go from Main Street, I think it's Main and McCullar, Main and Central, and although it's painted yellow to advise people parking their cars, that they shouldn't be parking there. I don't know if it's because it's on Sunday, that it's not being enforced, or that people think that it's only for Monday through Friday, or for Saturdays, but there's parking, and that's, I don't want to wait until there is a car accident, or someone has to be taken to the hospital before this sort of parking issue is addressed or enforced. And I know it's something that I've addressed or alerted Public Works to before, and it seemed to be quiet for a while, and now it's coming up again, so...
I'll attempt to answer the question. Are the curbs painted yellow in that area?
Yes, they are.
Then that's no parking at any time, and it's probably a matter of enforcement, unless we need to increase that zone of no parking to get the cars farther from the street. That would take a traffic commission evaluation before we would do that.
My understanding is that if people did not park in the area that's listed, or that's painted for no parking, that there wouldn't be any sort of danger for people who are driving in that area. So, I guess it's also a matter of enforcement, and I know the police also do enforcement on that area, but if that's something that you could, Public Works can work with the police about enforcing, since it's on a Sunday, which I understand there's perhaps less staff on working those hours.
The yellow zones are established using visibility triangles, to establish them for safety reasons, based on the speed limit and where the stop signs are at. So, that's how we establish those zones. So, it's a matter of enforcing those zones.
Mr. Walden?
What we'll do is, we'll just double-check the yellow zones, make sure they're properly marked, make sure they're correct in their placement, and we'll have, on Sundays, that would be a patrol officer, as opposed to meter patrol. However, we'll just, we'll take a look at it this next week and see where we are.
Great, thank you. That's all.
Any other? This is the council. I just, I just have one. In our package tonight, we had this night out. It's a joint city of Champaign and Urbana National Night Out Celebration. The theme, family home safety. Celebration is to thank residents for their continued efforts in working to keep the community safe. Where? West Side Park in Champaign. When? Tuesday, August 3rd, which is tomorrow, from 5:00 to 7:30. Free parking at Bank of Illinois, Champaign County House and Authority, and the Union Planners Bank. Be food, hot dogs, popcorn, pink lemonade, and ice cream. Games on keeping safe, with fun and prizes, activities and entertainment. If you have any questions, contact Maywood Thomas, Neighborhood Services, or Champaign or Bob Gruy. Grant management office, Urbana. Thank you. Full business? We force a standing committees. The committee at home, Mr. Ito?
Ordinance number 2004-07-084, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to establish a parking meter zone on certain streets, Goodwin Avenue. Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that ordinance number 2004-07-084 be moved and approved. Any questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
S60. Next up, item?
Ordinance number 2004-07-085, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, fire saw terrorism grant, move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that this ordinance revising the annual budget be approved. Ms. Chenoweth?
Thank you. I want to know what the Terrorism Task Force grant will fund. What kinds of activities does a terrorism task force do? And I believe, in both the case of this ordinance and the next, that we're not looking at any additional expenditure out of the general fund, but all grant activities. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
The Illinois Terrorism Task Force, I'll try and make this as quick as possible, is an organization that was established by the state of Illinois approximately, it might be off by a year, about three years ago. Maybe four now. Over the last several years, it has grown to the point where they have, Illinois leads the country and is ranked third, only behind New York City and Atlanta, due to the Olympics and disaster preparedness, both in terrorism as well as natural disasters. This organization, which now the city of Urbana now has a seat on the Terrorism Task Force, along with Champaign with one seat, has been active in developing special response programs in the state, and statewide response programs, incorporating police, fire, Public Works, and all the entities of our communities. This grant here is in support of our technical rescue program we have here, our specialized rescue team. This specific grant is for $8,900, and provides our team the ability to take on the challenge of the collapse of a concrete structure. We had cutting abilities only to five inches. This gives us up to nearly 10 inches of being able to cut through solid concrete, 10 inches thick, which is something you would experience in some of our larger structures. The cost, this is the full cost of the program, there are no expenses coming out of the city, except for honestly, fuel once in a while for it. This will be, we'll be able to sustain this saw within our operating budget with very little overhead whatsoever. The saw does remain, in a sense, under the name of the Department of Homeland Security slash Illinois Terrorism Task Force, and it's ours to use at their mercy, and also for us to respond. We are within the state response plan. I recognize a member of that. So, it's a good program. We have more coming within this. You hopefully will see the next few months of vehicle, and trailer package is the last part of this grant, they're spiking out at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman? Yes.
Mr. Ito?
Ordinance number 2004-07-086, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, FEMA grant, and Public Works radios, move approval.
Second.
Move in second it. Ordinance number 2004-07-086 be approved. Any questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
S60.
Okay, can we do the next one as an omnibus? Okay. Item D, UBA contract, two ordinance, ordinance number 2004-07-088, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for promotion and marketing services, Urbana Business Association, 2004, 2005. And ordinance number 2004-07-089, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for TIF promotion and marketing services, Urbana Business Association. Move approval of both ordinances.
Second.
Second.
And the next? Two items on the agenda have been moved in an omnibus fashion. Ordinance number 2004-07-088, ordinance number 2004-07-089, removed for approval. Any questions? Ms. Chenoweth?
Not a question, but a statement. I just urge council members to support funding for the UBA. The UBA has been growing over the last year, and is a partner in the Campaign to Build Downtown. The TIF costs will help the UBA to pursue joining the Illinois Mainstream Program and other Campaign to Build Downtown-related initiatives. So, I think that this is the kind of support that we need to be giving to the organization right now.
Any other discussion? None? Clerk?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?